All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, meeting of the Dudley Planning Board. At this time, I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and ask everyone to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda, new business, approval of minutes for the February 12th, 2025 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at those minutes for the February 12th meeting? Would somebody like to?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the minutes for the February 12th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Okay, Mr. Clark has made a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Guy Horn has seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Unanimous? She's gone. I was doing that for the board's benefit. Next item on the agenda, Lyons Estates update. We had heard from Mr. Ravain that he was going to be attending the meeting this evening. I do not see him present, so we will move on to item three on the agenda. Actually, so we've got a Zoom call scheduled for... Oh, we don't have a time. Amanda, do you know?
That's what she's actually doing.
That's what she's actually doing, all right. So without objection, we'll move on to item four, greatest hits. Chase Ave. Aura is not here, but we basically reached out to a couple of different people regarding having somebody come in and give the report. Latest understanding from today's email is that apparently the report's going to be given a report or an update on that situation is going to be given at the next... Was it the next selectments meeting? I don't remember.
March 24th, whatever.
Okay. The March 24th selectments meeting. So I guess if you want to see what they have to say about that, I would suggest attending that meeting. If more than two of us plan on attending that meeting, we probably want to post it as a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I, for one, don't plan on being there. Anybody else?
I, for one, would likely be there.
All right.
I'm going to be there.
Okay, so.
We don't have to post it though.
Yeah, I'd like to be there, but tend to when I won't.
Okay.
The only matter is if we talk, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a gray area, I guess.
As a citizen.
Yeah, okay. We'll roll with that then. All right, so. Aura, just to keep you up to date on where we are here, we approved the minutes. Richard motioned to approve the minutes. Guy seconded. It was unanimous. We went to number two. Tom Ravain's not here, so we moved on. We went to number three, realized you needed more time. We went to number four, we just finished discussing that. We're taking no action there because we are now told that the selectmen's... The selectmen are going to have a meeting to update.
Would you like me to have Olivia posted as a joint meeting in case?
We were just talking about that. We don't think that more than two of us are going to show up, and even if a third shows up, we're not going to be speaking as planning board members. We'll be speaking as residents, concerned residents.
Okay.
Or unconcerned residents, whatever you want. Should I go on to the next item, Aura, or are you ready?
Twelve percent.
We can just, if there's any discussion on the master plan or the A and R, you can just go down the list.
Sure. Okay, so we're going to go to number five on the list, which is the master plan update. I don't have anything unless you want to tell me about.
I was copied an email from Dominique DeBuchelle, I think is the pronunciation of her name. As you may recall, she was one of the folks representing CMRPC when we went before the selectmen. She indicated that there's a period upcoming, which will expire on 3/26, and suggested that we might want to consider an indication of interest or some wording to that effect to the body that makes the decisions as far as the grants are concerned. We were looking for some way of minimizing the issue with regards to the sewer moratorium and discussing that with her. I tried to highlight the fact that this applies only to a certain part of Dudley and is not universal in terms of the entire community. I've since been in touch with that same day, Monday, I talked to Jen Canoyer, Water and Sewer, and trying to get some handle in terms of what exactly the number of parcels or the number of square miles or some dimensional idea of what that is so that we could identify that the rest of the town is not being affected. And again, trying to minimize the impact of the moratorium. Jen, I haven't heard back from Jen yet. I know her to be a very conscientious person, so I suspect that would be forthcoming. But if and when we get something from Water and Sewer indicating the parameters as far as this moratorium is concerned, I would appreciate the consensus of the board, if you will, to go forward with that expression of interest so that we can keep our irons in the fire, so to speak, and let folks know that we still have interest in looking for that grant or hoping to get that grant.
Well, I mean, my thinking is, what's the downside? Why not... I mean, basically, we're just talking about going for a grant.
Yeah, but the downside would be is if you get the grant and you don't have a town planner to help put it through.
Well, I think we're hoping that some part of that might be resolved this evening, or at least closer to it, anyway.
Well, I guess my question to you then, Mr. Clark, would be, what do you think the timeline is? When is the grant deadline, application deadline? When do you think the grants would be?
As I recall, it's in September.
Yeah. So our temporary fix for town planner is good until May at best.
That doesn't work too well, as far as the calendar goes.
Right.
There's a big gap there.
So then, I think maybe we should still consider, like I said at a previous meeting, we're going to probably have to continue to put a pin in that one.
Okay.
I know it's important, we all know it's important.
Well, I'll convey that to Dominique later now.
Just not going to be ready.
Okay. All right, and we'll cross our fingers on the planner.
Okay. Number six, A and R checklist update. I don't have anything new on that right now. We're not going to have that ready for this coming Springstown meeting. I'm going to actually look for guidance from, hopefully, the person who's going to be our interim town planner is going to be able to help with that.
That's a good thought.
Did that have to go through town meeting? I thought that was one of the questions, if we change it.
Well, the first step would be to put it before town council, and I'll ask that question at that time.
I don't believe any forms have to go before town meeting.
But as far as checking the legality of the form?
That's going before, Mr. Horn, given your level of expertise, maybe you know. In terms of going before final town meeting for a form, is that required just a majority?
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
You can make any form, Aura.
All right. What about public hearing?
Maybe a public hearing just to notify the public that the form is changing?
Again, I think we talked about this before. It's my only... The only reason I even question it at all is because the forms are in an appendix of the subdivision rules and regulations, so technically, they're in the subdivision rules and regulations.
Right.
So changing a form would be changing the subdivision rules and regulations.
You can do that with a public hearing.
Right, that's why I always ask it. But we can't just... Can't do it tonight with a wave of the hand, right? Okay. All right. Next up, alternate planning board member, Thomas Chinacki. At the last meeting, we discussed the alternate planning board position was available again, and we have since learned that Mr. Chinacki is interested in taking that position, and I see him here in the audience tonight. I'll ask him if he wants to come forward and address the board, if he has anything he'd like to add.
No, I'll take the position.
Okay. All right.
I think it was like voted on last time.
All right, all right. I like it short and sweet, so somebody want to make a motion?
I would move that we appoint Mr. Thomas Chinacki as alternate planning board member.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome back. You have to get...
Eve Tapper is on.
Okay, so at this time, we finished new business except for I'd like to jump back to item number three, Town or Planner vacancy update. This is a Zoom meeting with Eve Tapper from Planners in a Pinch.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question with regards to Mr. Chinacki. Does he have to appear before Lori Smith, Tom Clerk to be sworn in?
He does. Okay, thank you. So what I was just saying, Town Planner vacancy update, Zoom meeting with Eve Tapper from Planners in a Pinch. Ready when you are. Oh, there she is.
Yes.
Hi, Eve, can you hear us?
I can hear you fine, great.
Great, great, we can hear you also. So just a quick update, last week, I met with Ms. Tapper and the Assistant Town Administrator, and we talked about the position that we have available here. And as I had explained previously at a previous meeting, Planners in a Pinch is an organization that gives temporary help to municipalities to fill openings on a short-term basis. So the idea would be, instead of being left high and dry while we continue to search for a permanent replacement for Mr. Scanlon, Planners in the Pinch, this organization, would help us. And Eve met with, like I said, we had this meeting, had a little interview, we talked about her qualifications, her background, seemed quite impressive to me, but I thought at this time it would be good for her to come and meet the board somewhat face-to-face. And if the board is in agreement, then I'd like to move forward with approving her as our interim town planner. So I'm going to open up the floor to the board members. Anybody want to go first with questions for Ms. Tapper?
Mr. Chairman, I will.
Okay.
Ms. Tapper, if you don't mind, just a quick introduction and just a short summary of your qualifications.
Sure. So again, my name is Eve Tapper. I started Planners in a Pinch probably about 10 years ago now. I've got more than 20 years of experience working in municipalities, mostly in Massachusetts. And I found that there was a lot of turnover in some places, and I had done enough jobs in the planning departments that I felt like I could sort of keep the trains running on time. And it's really important, especially in... I used to live in Newton and worked in Newton where we have a pretty robust planning department. But in a lot of communities like in Douglas, I mean, I'm sorry, in Dudley, there's only one person. And so if you... If that person's not there, then there's a lot of work that needs to be done and deadlines that the board needs. And so I try to keep the trains running on time, try to work through projects, mostly short-term. I came on and I heard you talking about... I mean, I can do those things, but I think those are better left till you have someone full-time who then can implement it if you get the grant and the like. So I usually offer my clients 10 hours a week. And I think Steve and I talked about coming into the office one day a week and then doing the rest of it sort of online with the town computer probably to be able to get into the server for documents and the like. But it's sort of, I let my towns tell me what they would like me to do and what's most important for them at any particular time. And also, you know, answer questions from the public. Any board members might have questions outside of the office. I do think that Steve's been answering a lot of those questions, or they've been going to him. And so I have a fair amount of experience in municipalities in Massachusetts, so some of them I can answer. And otherwise, I would just research. I don't know your bylaw by heart now, but I... A pretty quick study, one of my jobs was actually working in zoning in particular. So every community is a little bit different, and then there's a lot of similarities. So I take what I learned in each community and sort of carry it on to my next client.
So would you be filling the role, or you and your staff?
So it's me at the moment. It is me. I would love there to be more people, but as I was telling Steve at the moment, you know, it's my name on the line in my company, so I need to find someone that I feel like if I were to ever sub it out to somebody else, I'd need someone that I would feel really comfortable with doing it the way that I would do it. So that's kind of why I heard him say also that I'm not really available after May because I've got a, you know, at the moment, anyway, I've got a prior commitment that starts in June. That being said, the nature of what I do is sometimes something falls through, or I didn't have anything a couple weeks ago, and now I've got... Sometimes when it rains, it pours. So I put in the proposal, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it or not, but you know, if you still need someone and I'm still available, we could conceivably extend it. But for the moment, I'm not available starting in June. But you know, I try to also help you find the right fit. In addition to, you know, keeping the trains running on time, I also don't... Some communities would take the first person that walked in the door if they had to. And so this allows a little bit more time to find the right fit. I know that you guys are looking in conjunction with Spencer, which is, you know, its own good and bad. I think it's a great idea, but you've got to find someone that you both agree on. So I can try to help with that and try to recruit, you know, as I was saying, you probably want someone who lives in the area. I grew up in Worcester, but I live in Boston now, so it's a little bit of a hike for me. So someone who wants it full-time is going to probably want to be from the Worcester County area.
All right, thank you.
Couple of questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Good evening and welcome. I would mention that what you see here is not the whole ball of wax, if you will. The planner historically has been a resource for economic development, open space and recreation, and various other committees as they've come on board. And those meetings, ours typically are, of course, in the evening, but those are various times during the day. So I'm not too sure how flexible your schedule might be in that regard.
Well, as I said, I will... I let the community tell me how they want to use my five hours, I mean, my 10 hours that I give to you. So you'd want me to go to a meeting in that regard, I could... You know, I have a little bit of flexibility in my schedule. That being said, I think Steve and I had a long conversation. Part of my pricing structure is that I charge by the hour for my drive. So we were trying to limit me coming more than once a week because otherwise it's two hours round trip. So you know, if it's... So for instance, I would be... I would like to come in person for these planning board meetings because it's a little bit hard to be having these conversations not in person.
Right.
I think that's... But if there was another meeting you wanted me to go to in the middle of the day and it wasn't the same day as a... Same week as a planning board meeting and it was a different day, I can be flexible when I can. But you know, to keep in mind that we're trying to, for cost purposes, limit it to once a week.
I appreciate that. I just, you know, once the word is out, if it gets out, that we have a planner, there are other folks who'll be looking for that opportunity to... Because as we've been without someone for some time, they have as well. So I don't know what backlog in terms of items or issues.
With all due respect, Richard, though, she would be paid out of our budget.
Right.
So as far as her going to other commissions, I'm not...
No, 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 I think it's more of a concern in terms of her end because there are times in terms of their meetings, not necessarily in the evening, that, you know, they're not...
I think that what I'm getting at is, give me an example of, are you talking like recreation? Or...
Well, in the past, we've had a open space and recreation committee, which I was on.
Again, being that she's going to be an interim, not a full-time planner, I didn't envision her... One of her tasks as being on that committee.
Okay, you were exclusively for the benefit of the planning board.
I'm trying to keep her pretty much exclusively for the planning board.
All I would submit is that when the word gets out, so to speak, if somebody else has what they think is a need, they may be interested in... Maybe they would have a separate contract in order to cover that.
I'm there for 10 more hours.
Got you right.
I just wanted to get that out there.
What Ms. Tapper and I had... I was just going to tell them about the discussion we had about the commute versus being here.
Oh.
So we talked about one day a week. We figured Wednesday would be a good day to make it every Wednesday would be the day that she would come in. That way, if it's the Wednesday that we have a meeting that falls on, she could come in just start in the afternoon and just stay for the meeting. If that makes sense to the board.
We do have a cutoff at 10.
Yeah. I'm happy to do whatever you want. If I'm also... Generally, I would be in on a particular day. As the... Whenever I start an engagement, there's always like, oh, I had a doctor's appointment that was scheduled well in advance, out of town. So it may not be every Wednesday immediately, but if I'm in the office, you know, whoever comes in the door asking any kind of a question, be it an applicant or another member of the public or a board member or, you know, a resident on a different committee, that if I'm there and I'm not in the middle of something that has to be done for the planning board, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have regarding land use and zoning.
And your availability, if I may, is to May... From the end to the end of May, or?
Yeah, at least to the end of May.
End of May, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything more for Ms. Tapper? Okay. So at this time, would somebody like to make a motion approving the appointment of Ms. Tapper as the interim town planner?
So moved.
Okay, gonna... I actually...
Do we have this?
I would allow...
I was asking somebody else to make the motion.
Someone else.
And then somebody could second it and then we'll vote on it.
Okay, well, I think I've made a motion or attempted to.
Do we have this contract somewhere?
Well, or what... Exactly how does that work with the Assistant Town Planner? I mean, it's actually them that... Once we approve this, we kick it over to the front office and they're the ones who do the final...
The contract.
Yeah, exactly. We don't really have the authorization to...
To sign the contract.
Right.
But it's the board's...
But they won't make a move without us.
Right. And the contract would be for 10 hours a week, up to 10 hours a week.
Quite frankly, they wanted a pin on me, and I was like, no, I'd really like to get the board's input. So that's why... That's why she's here tonight.
It's just two months.
Yeah, I was just wondering, she said there was a contract, so I was just wondering if we had a copy of it, so.
That's what the proposal is.
I had a proposal.
Proposal, proposal, not contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go forward with the proposal for Eve Tapper.
Tapper.
Tapper, sorry. As interim town planner for the next two months.
Okay, we have a motion.
Sure.
The motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Are unanimous. Guy made the motion, Richard seconded, okay. All right, Eve, did you want to stick around and just eavesdrop on how boring this is? Or did you want... Or do you have something up? It's up to you.
It looks like you're almost done with the agenda.
Yeah.
I will... Olivia told me that after the meeting, if you had approved it, that I should touch base with her, so I will touch base with her tomorrow and try to get it started as soon as possible.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Try and get an hour out of her for free.
Mr. Chairman, just a...
Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
I reluctantly voted yes. The reason I voted yes was because of Ms. Tapper's willingness to try to find... Help us find a replacement.
Okay.
I don't know what can actually be accomplished in two months, but if she has connections and knows people and can help us find someone who's willing to work with us full-time, I think that'd be well worth the two months.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. Okay, so now, going to go back to the agenda. Okay.
It has not appeared.
No, so we will go to standard business, discussion of staff's report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted and accepted subdivision streets, including Pier Ponte Estates, there's nothing new there. Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, there's nothing new there. Lyons Estates, once again, Mr. Ravain. Aura, did you hear anything from him? Did he have to cancel or just no-show?
No, as far as I know, after I talked to him.
That's... I thought we... Yeah, Aura was present when I was on the phone with Mr. Ravain.
I thought it was...
Okay, all right, so we...
No-show.
Yeah, so Aura, I would like you to reach out to him. You're in the office tomorrow?
Yes.
I would like you to reach out to him tomorrow. Ask him what gives. Okay, let's see. That was Lyons Estates. Sophie's Way, got nothing new there. Inspections and actions associated with site plans. Legacy Landing Country Club Acres, I'm being told that we have Mitch. Mitch?
Mitch?
Last name?
Mitch and Dick, they're both here.
Okay, well... Mitch, what is your last name?
Wondrchuk.
Okay. Would you like to come up into the microphone, introduce yourself?
We have a sign-in sheet out of here.
Yeah, I was busy putting one meeting over.
I realize he's not on the agenda, but it falls under Legacy Landing.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
All right. But just for the sake of full disclosure...
Sure, no problem.
...I did have conversation with this gentleman earlier today.
And you are in a pod, so I appreciate that. All right. So as soon as you're ready, just your full name and your address for the record, please.
Yep.
Yep. I'm glad spring is coming. We came in last year in fall, if you remember, just asking, you know, what is the process? And now that we're into spring, we're also under the impression, or you were told us that, I think that the builder had asked for an extension, I think through June, to finish the project. And if that is correct, and we just got a few months left to get things done, and the Board of Trustees there at our association, we do have three concerns, excuse me, that we'd like to talk about, or at least make you aware of. The first one's very simple. The builder is installing three street lamps in our property that will be connected to National Grid. They put the poles in place, they buried them three feet, I think the code requirement is four, and they backfilled with dirt and it's been sitting like that since like last fall. So we've expressed our concern to the builder and the builder says that's always the way they do it, and so I don't expect any changes to be done. I know we had the Dudley Electrical Inspector stop by and he said, this has got to be back, down deeper and filled with concrete, was his comment. So that's one of our worries and we still don't have lights on, there's no power to it yet because National Grid, you know, has not come on site. So one of the questions, and I know, I think I know the answer, but I know there is a bond and I don't know if it's, you have to wait till the builder comes in and says he's done so that Graves Engineering can go down and take a look at the site because we have two other issues, and therefore we are in essence just waiting for all of that to happen. If there was an opportunity for us to be able to use some of that bond money, we can make the arrangements to get these poles in properly, but I think that might be a real problem with the builder, just kind of asking the question.
We don't necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Horn, I'll defer to your expertise, we don't necessarily have to wait if the builder has just stopped doing, like, we can't have a situation where if a builder stops moving forward with the project and stops being responsive to the board. I mean, bad weather is one thing, but if there's no reason why he's not finishing it other than not wanting to spend the money, then it becomes...
I think, I think to touch the money and the bond, you would have to have the extension that, if he has an extension to June, you have to give him to June.
Right. I'm sorry, I should have clarified, I meant if, yeah.
Okay, if he goes past June and the work's not done, then we can, we could touch the bond and have it finished at his expense.
Right. And in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, though, in the past, we typically still try and get the contractor to finish it even.
Yeah, I mean, it's his, it's his project.
It's his project. We don't like to...
I mean, this is...
I can understand that, I mean...
Unfortunately, you have the privilege of living in the first open space residential subdivision in Dudley, so this is the first time it's happened.
Oh, is that right? Okay, well, we're leading the way, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the talk was of three concerns?
Yeah, I was just going to get to that.
Yeah, that was just the first one, I thought it was a simple one to ask. The other two get a little bit more involved and there's a history, as you well know, of original builder way back when, I was going to put condominiums in there and he bailed and the new builder, they took that project over and hired a different architect and developed the plans and has been building it. As we look at the products, there's a couple of things that we're really quite concerned about. Number one of them is the site, civil work wasn't done according to the drawings that were incorporated or for this project. This was supposed to be a surface flow water detention system where it would, gravity would just, you know, just flow down through the catch basins and then off into a detention pond. The builder, when they started, he said, the comment was, well, this will never work because it's a big, big property and trying to get all those flows properly going to the catch basins. So they modified the plan and they went ahead and on one side of the street, which would be the west side, they slightly raised the foundation level, dirt level of the houses. On one end, just a few inches, on the other hand, a little bit higher. And then they installed three, three big catch basins, so to speak, pipes this big, surrounded by rock, tied into the rest of the water flow system, and then would go off to the detention system. Good idea, but what we're seeing is that there's been a lot of ponding on the property and next to those, those flows. In other words, it hasn't been graded so that all the water is flowing to some area to leave the site. So we think there's more civil work done just to smooth out the whole property so that that does work. We're waiting for the rainy season, we'll probably see more ponding. We've seen some already just because of the winter and the rain we got there, and we've identified that on the, on the plan, the site plan. So that was sort of one issue is just re-correcting that, and I think Graves would be a great person to come out and review that. We'd be glad, glad to walk him through that. So that's the one issue, and then the third issue really relates to loam being spread on the property before hydroseeding. Our development apparently used to be an old farm and the soil was fabulous. All of that was scraped off and put into actually three or four huge piles of loam while construction went on. Before we, everyone moved in, all of that loam was, in essence, vibrated, took out all the rocks, loaded up and trucked, and it was all sold to a local, you know, local owner here. So all the loam was gone. And now what we have is been hydroseated probably a couple of times, but it's just dirt and rock. And we're really upset about that because walking on it is not pleasant and growing grass is not pleasant and it's hard as a rock. So we really need, I think, we need to have loam added to that surface. So we need to regrade, make sure it's going to feed our drains, then ply loam and then re-hydroseed. That's the third one. And all the drawings that, I might as well throw this one in here because, because of the history of this coming from a condominium and it showed on the condominium drawings, stop signs, speed limit signs, painted crossings for, for the walking trail, that translated over into the two drawings that were actually accepted by the builder in the bond. They are two, two separate drawings. And Graves Engineering did the, did the estimate and arrived at the $494,000 bond value. Clearly, the, as, as the association is concerned, we see two drawings involve, one with no streetlights because it's a utility plan, the other one is sort of the site plan, and it does show all of the, all of those stop signs and so forth. That really ought to be part of the scope as well, and that's covered in, in the estimate of that bond value, so.
Graves would go by the site plan, what's on the site plan. So at, during that final inspection we talked about, when Graves goes there, he's going to be looking for what's on the site plan. So if there's a sign that's supposed to be there, a stop sign, then that's...
Well, that's, yeah, but the builder said he never does signage, so that, we know that's not going to get done, but that should be...
And it'll come back, Graves will report to us, the sign's not there, we'll say, well, no, you agreed that you would do a sign, so go do a sign.
Yeah.
Right?
So anyway, I added another item to it. So there are really four issues here that we're kind of talking about.
Okay, just to back up one second, the ponding of the water issue?
Yes.
The whereabouts is that happening? I wasn't quite clear what you were talking about. Where is that, where is, where are you seeing that?
Okay, well, on the west side behind the houses, there's supposed to be a, like a backyard for five houses.
Okay.
And in the middle of that, you'll see a pond around a couple of the trees that were planted, and the water just waits till evaporate, it doesn't, doesn't go anywhere.
Oh, this isn't in the road? This is actually...
No, this is on the property itself, yes, yes.
Okay, and it's not, that's not a detention area where you're seeing that ponding? This is...
Oh, no, the detention area is actually working well.
Okay.
The water that gets there, I saw it one, last year, it was like right up to the top, next morning, all gone. So the detention system works fine. It's just we want to make sure all the water gets to it.
Okay.
And so we're looking at that. Along the dust trail, there are two spots that, actually, two spots that collect water. You can't walk through it after a storm. And then there's some erosion coming from the big house that's not on, next to us, where the water comes down, is supposed to flow into the, into the, one of those big, you know, underground pipes that they added, but it's eroding the dust walk, so. And then on the other side, the east side, clearly one, and then about, I think there's like seven or eight homes along that side. First four, you can see, if you just stand at the south side and look north, you can see that everything is sloped down towards the houses, and all the downspouts from the houses just come right out and drop. So there is a low area for water in that, that area, and then as you head, as, south, the line gets a little bit level and it isn't that much of a problem there, but we're going to watch for the rainy season and mark up the drawings.
So the, the walking trail?
Yes.
You're saying there's two spots where it ponds on that also?
Two spots on one side, yes, and then...
And that's on the other side of the property from where the big pond...
Detention pond is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
What was your fourth item, sir?
I thought you said you had three.
Did you say you had a fourth item?
I'm sorry?
Did you say you had a fourth item also?
Yeah, I added all the signage. I mean, it's covered in the bond, it's covered in the agreement, so to me, the signage is in.
I didn't put that on my list because I figured that was covered since it's in the site. Okay, all right, so when we get to speak with him about this, we'll bring up these concerns.
Okay.
And we'll also ask for a timeline. He should be coming in for an extension, let's see, June?
If it ends in June, yeah.
Right, yeah, so he should be in for an extension within the next three weeks, I would say.
Because he's probably not going to be, he's probably not going to make the June deadline anymore.
Mr. Chairman, as, as in a butter, there's an issue that I'd like to bring to the board's attention.
Okay.
Actually, it's one that was raised by Mr. Horn, I believe, at the last meeting. There are signs on the property, and I think I took pictures of and forwarded them to the board members, indicating no trespassing private community, as I recall. And those signs are at a point where someone would not know or have access to what is the nature trail, which was part of the original plan. In other words, there's a nature trail, but you're told not to go there, so you'll never get to it.
I forgot about that. It's supposed to be public access, we talked about that, so...
There's also the public parking area where there are two spaces provided, and I believe the thought last time we discussed it was that there should be one indicated, at least as a handicap space, there's no indication or no sign at all for either of them, so that's...
You know, the irony is, if I were one of these people that lived in there, I would love the fact that they've got those private property signs to keep out and, you know, if you don't live in the neighborhood, stay the hell out of your sites. So, just so you know.
Well, I'll confess, I have a violation of that just about every day, the weather's with me, and as he can well attest, I'm sure. I go in there with my grandson, we walk through and if the dog's behaving himself, he comes along. But we did, when this was proposed, we were looking for something that residents of Dudley as a whole, as opposed to those fortunate few who are living there, would have access to something and be of benefit to the community, as we don't have a whole lot of places that are available today for passive recreation, so to speak.
Not only that, the installation of that public walking trail, give the developer another two to three houses.
Okay.
Because you've got a density bonus for installing that trail.
Right, it was a trade-off.
All right, so fear is fear. He got what he wanted, then we should be getting a...
Absolutely, yeah.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Sure.
Give you our thoughts. First of all, part of the signage and painted surfaces is one in the spot where you're talking about, where cars can park, one of them is handicapped and should be highlighted that way if we do the painting.
Right.
So that would be solved if we solve signs. The other thing is, it's a private road, and we've got so many people just zip through that place as a shortcut, so that was the reason why we put up the sign indicating private property, no trespassing, and it was intended for the cars. We've seen people from the community just walking the dust trail, and we're certainly not discouraging that at all. And that was not the intent of that sign, it was really intent for car traffic, speed limit, is on the sign.
I apologize, but I haven't been through there recently, so I don't recall. There are no speed bumps in there.
No, no.
No. So one, one suggestion I might make, possible remedy to that is, they do have speed bumps that can be removed. That might be something if the association wanted to vote and decide to pay for on their own and add later, you might want to do that. And the good thing about them is you could take them out so that in the wintertime, when it's less likely you're going to have people speeding through there, it doesn't interfere with snow removal.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting till everything's done so we can start with some of our stuff.
Mr. Chairman, if I recall, I believe there were some provisions for some sort of gated or limited access, or a key fob situation or something at both entrances, because it was a concern when we were first looking at this, as to emergency vehicles and how they would access the property if there were an emergency. And we were given to believe, I, as I recall, and my memory's not perfect by any means, that there were provisions for something, and that something would have allowed emergency vehicle access. But it was intended to limit access to the residents and/or any of their guests or people that they so desire.
Well, if somebody wants to use that private trail, we just talked about that.
Right, but I mean, this was to the, for the property itself, that vehicle, traffic would be restricted to residents and those that they, you would invite it on to the property and/or, in the case of need, emergency vehicles. There's some kind of electronic system.
The gate was approved. It was, it was approved in one of the versions, whether it's the version that they built.
The Bob Ruder version.
Did you recall it, there was, was it key fobs or is it...
No, it was, it was a gate that was going to basically split the subdivision in half.
Okay.
So if you lived on one side, you'd come in from one side, you could go up to the gate. If you lived on the other side, you'd come in from that side.
But you couldn't drive through with a shortcut?
So there was going to be a restriction, so none of that, none of that's in place.
It stopped the drive-through people, but it didn't block the people from going to park in the parking spots and walk around.
And then emergency vehicles could go either way.
They would have, they would have a button to push and go through or bump, bump something and it would just open up. You know, if it wasn't electric, it would just open up.
Coming attractions, apparently.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have had emergency vehicles come through with no trouble, but it's the Amazon trucks, the, everyone else, everyone else. And we know our neighbors, there's only 22 houses there, so you kind of know strangers from people just doing the quickie.
Right. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a comment for the audience?
Sir?
I didn't remember. Hey, guys. Just, just like, like the developer has told...
Tom, just for the record, please just say it, name and address.
Ah, yes, Severn Eagle Drive, Dudley, Mass. But developer tell has till June, so I don't know what, homeowner association, he has told June to finish it, and then they can complain. You guys are kind of like jumping the line. You get what I mean? Like, maybe he'll put in the signs, maybe he'll fix the grading, just saying.
Are there private road signs at the, by your house on the other side?
Private community, I think it's described as. Doesn't say, that's not a pri, doesn't, the verbiage is not private roadway, as you might see in other...
It's not one of those official green signs that says private way?
No, no.
All right, okay. All right, anything else regarding Legacy Landing before we move on? All right.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes, sir.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
My colleague just reminded me of a...
Go ahead.
With people that are, are just visiting and walking the dust trail?
Uh-huh.
You know, from the community, not, not the, our association, what are your thoughts regarding, let's say they fall and get hurt? I mean, there could be a lot of liability either on us, I'm not sure quite...
That sounds like a legal question. I wouldn't touch that with a 10-foot pole, with all due respect, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Just something to ask, thank you.
For somebody with a higher pay... For somebody with a higher pay grade than mine. Okay, moving on. SEP Solar, Oxford Avenue, nothing new there, right? Stevens Mill, well, we had the update, so... So we had that update a little while ago at the selectmen's meeting there, so I think we're good on that for now. Solar project at landfill, I don't think we have anything new there. Dudley Housing Authority, or Dudley Housing Authority, we're, nothing new there, right? We're just waiting until, we're waiting for spring for the, right, that's what I thought. So we're good there. Okay, Planner's Plate, Aura, do you have anything you want to put at Planner's Plate? Last chance to actually act. Okay, all right. Comments from the planning board? Anybody have anything they want to add?
I got something.
Okay, Mr. Durgan.
So I was trying to put it on the agenda. I plan on changing this bylaw, this chicken bylaw. I tried to put it on the agenda, but I was, got blocked. So I gave this, here's a copy, pass it down, take one, pass it down. I gave a copy of this to Burlingame on Monday, and we talked about it. Basically, I plan on going to do a citizen's petition and change the wording of the bylaw to make it more clear. The way I read it, chickens are permitted in every district, and so are cows and dairy animals. And I know this law, we, the town has definitely fought this in the courts, and we spent $12K on that lawsuit. So this is a challengeable lawsuit, obviously. It's already happened once in 2009. So my plan is to take everything that's green and add it, and the yellow part's supposed to be red, but I ran out of ink. So that, I would just get rid of the dairy animals and dairy products.
But again, you're saying a citizen's petition, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, David, if you don't mind, would you mind getting up out of that seat and addressing the planning board as a citizen then? Because you're acting, right now, or you're acting as a planning board member?
Right, well, I'll recuse myself as a planning board member and stay in the seat.
Okay, fine. We won't make anybody sit, so from now on...
That's another question I have, though. As a planning board member, I have the right to do this as well, too, correct? Because didn't Richard Clark come up with the EV charging station? Wasn't that yours?
Wait, regards to what, the housing authority?
No, the EV charging station bylaw that we tried to put in a couple of years ago. Oh, was it you?
I think I was probably at least part and parcel of that.
Okay, that was all built? I thought that was you.
That was under the recommendation of the state.
Right.
For the record, I appreciate that wasn't an individual planning board member who decided they had a pet project, they wanted to move forward and said, "Hey, I think we should have X, or we should change Y, so therefore, I'm going to use my seat."
I think, I don't think anybody's gonna, I don't think a lot of people are going to object to this with eggs at $10 a dozen, so I think if you want to have chickens, you're going to be allowed to have chickens.
No, they're like five bucks a dozen more.
So did anybody, did anybody see the last ZBA meeting, by any chance?
CBA meeting?
No. Only Board of Appeals, where Mr. Durgan came before the board, and he asked, and Nelson Burlingame, the code enforcement officer was present, and he asked Nelson for interpretation of this. All right, so I'm going to summarize it for you.
Wait, I asked Nelson Burlingame for the, and then I didn't get an answer from him, I got an answer from Steve Petrova.
That he corroborated.
Watch the meeting.
Watch the meeting.
I did watch the meeting, and he still didn't, he just said, "Ah, this is all," it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Let's skip to the end. The decision was made that since you did not agree with the code enforcement officer or any of the ZBA members, the entire board's consensus on this, we suggested that you do what you want to do, which is make a citizen's petition and go forward with saying that chickens are not livestock, so therefore, we can have however, I don't know what you're going to put in your citizen's petition, do you want, how many you wanted?
Didn't even put a number, that's a good point.
12 chickens?
Should be maximum 12, I guess.
Let's do 50.
Well, no, and these are all good things that you can debate, so if he, this is perfect.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it here.
You bring a citizen's petition, you bring it to the floor, and then somebody can come up and say, "I think that's a great idea," and they vote on it. Or somebody could come up and say, "Wait a minute, 12 chickens? You know, an average laying hand makes four to six chicks, four to six eggs in one week." So if you're going to get 12 chickens, that makes it actually easy math, because 12 is a dozen, right?
Yeah.
So all of a sudden, 12 chickens is netting you four to six dozen eggs a week. Four to six dozen eggs a week? I like eggs, but I don't like them that much. So at that point, you're really talking about, you're getting extra eggs and you're selling them. So it's no longer this little, cute little, "I just want a few chickens and save a little money on eggs."
I think your math is way off, because I had seven chickens, and we were getting a half a dozen a day.
You're not feeding your chickens enough.
And we were eating these chickens. What do you mean, a half a dozen a day?
I grew up on a farm, did you?
Who's this prohibited?
I don't need to grow up on a farm.
Okay.
I had chickens myself. I had four, I had...
So what do you want from the board this evening, Mr. Durgan?
I don't want anything, I just want to figure where the zoning bylaw keepers. So I just want to make you guys aware, if you guys got any complaints or anything you want to change, because I haven't gotten my signatures yet, so...
You have every right to...
This is still open, that's why I'm coming forward.
Like Mr. Jackie just said, you could literally go there, and you could say, "I've got a petition, I've got an article, I want it so that you can have 50 chickens on 10,000 square feet lot, on a 10,000 square foot lot. And I don't care what, I don't care about the smell, I don't care about what you do with dead chickens, or chickens when they get too old and they don't lay anymore, any of that. Or people who buy chickens because they think it's a great idea until they realize how much work it is, and they realize, you know what, maybe I will pay five bucks a dozen for eggs."
A question, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
In green, it says, "On parcel less than five acres."
Correct.
What does that mean? I mean, are they looking at the property that these gentlemen who have just left, is their property adequate in terms of, it's less than five acres?
No, in other words, it's very, it's very simple. The way the law is written right now and the way it's been interpreted, which is the disagreement here, is that if you have five acres or more of land?
Right.
You don't need to come for a special permit to have chickens or livestock.
You're exempt from zoning. I am just looking at the proposed, the proposal, which identified in green, as I understand it, is on parcel less than five acres, the verbiage as I see it.
If you have more than five acres, you don't have to do anything, you can do whatever you want.
Again, what do you define as less than five acres? I mean, does the lot size of the gentleman that were just here, is that adequate?
No, they're, they're lot sizes.
You've got to get a whole lot of chickens in those 22 residences.
You're not going to get a lot of chickens. Just because there's, just because there's a law that allows it, doesn't mean everyone's going to go and get chickens.
Less than five acres, what are we talking about?
We're talking literally, a single parcel, less than five acres, just like the state law.
A single parcel, less than five acres, can you define the parcel? Less than five acres, that's four and a half, four and seven acres.
A piece of land.
That's it.
A piece of land.
That's it!
Mr. Chairman?
I would like to move on, Mr. Edmiston.
All right, I just thought I had something useful, but it's okay.
All right, quickly, please.
Thank you. I like this idea, generally speaking. I think it has a lot of merit, especially considering, I saw a zoning board meeting not too long ago, where there was two neighbors kind of fighting about chickens, because chickens was crossing the street, getting into her property. I think something like this would have come into great use right then. I would like to see something like this on the agenda, where we can kind of talk about it, and talk about parcels, talk about how many chickens, and see if something that we can get together potentially and do the community a favor.
Okay, so, Mr. Edmiston, I believe, is making a motion that we place crap, so what we're talking about is, we would be, instead of having David get a citizen's petition for his article for chickens, we would actually craft the article ourselves, that's what...
That would be one option, or David could bring it as a citizen, and we could, we could support it, either way, but I think it's a great idea, and I think that it merits some...
I would be for that, I would be for that, because of that, the problem with going to the...
We don't have time.
What?
We don't have time to do that, though.
Well, I know, but what's going to happen the night of the town meeting is, you're going to have a lot of yelling back and forth over how many chickens, are too many chickens, what do you do with the manure?
Well, we could still have a public hearing for it, but we wouldn't have time to have a two-week notice, public hearing, before the town meeting closes, or before the warrant closes.
So we'd have to wait till fall for it to be on the...
We could still have a public hearing, and I'll keep it as a citizen petition, then you guys don't have to worry about looking like the guys that want chickens.
Except for the problem that your citizen's petition could literally be something different to what we discussed, if it's a citizen's petition, it could be anything.
That's what I'm saying, like, we have until the 27th, I think. So we wouldn't have time for that.
You literally...
We wouldn't have time for that either, no.
Yeah, if we're going to have the meeting to discuss crafting the bylaw, essentially, we're talking about what it should be called, is a backyard chicken bylaw. We should be, we should be thinking of it from the, not from the standpoint of, how big is your farm, because there's farm language in here. We're not talking about farms, you're talking about something...
It's a backyard, it's other farm uses, it's not farm. If it's other farm, why is it permitted in every single district?
Yeah, the chart in the top says, rent ten...
I can't believe I'm trying to help you out here, and you're still fighting me on this.
Because I disagree with you. You're saying it's other farm, we're not going to get into the other farm part.
But these are the things we can discuss, that could come to, when it's on the agenda and a discussion, we could figure out all of these details here. I didn't try to mean, I didn't mean to open it back up the conversation, Mr. Chairman, I just meant to say, hey, I think this is a good idea, maybe we should consider putting it on the agenda and try and possibly take some kind of planning board action on it. So I wanted to suggest, thanks for hearing me, though.
Okay, but you have to be here that night, I don't want you taking that night off.
Put tiny goats in it.
I think tiny goats are already part of the livestock, they're included in livestock. Remember Steve?
It's funny, the USDA has the most livestock.
I don't know. No, it could, see, he's...
He's trying to pull me into this, he's going to pull me into the same argument we already had, I'm not going to relitigate that. It's done. Mr. Edmiston, are you making a motion that we place on the agenda, a discussion about crafting a backyard chicken bylaw? Or did I just put too many words in your mouth, do you want to say it a different way?
No, I think I like the way it was stated.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I guess I am making that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have to... All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote.
Hey, we don't have time for that. I'm going to go with the citizen petition, because there's no time for it.
You're free to do that, but, you know, that's not the only town meeting, there's another one at the fall.
So the planning board could still be moving forward.
Mr. Chairman? I think he can't vote anyway, because he recused...
You know what, thank you, I don't know, I lost, I lost my head. Now you see, that's why we have people sit in the little chair.
Well, I could still vote on whether we have discussion, though.
But you recused yourself from this discussion, so you could discuss it with the board, and frankly, from an ethics standpoint, you should not be sitting at the table, you should be sitting away from the planning board.
Yeah, when you bring up my subdivision, I go up and stand in the hall now.
We don't make you do that.
Okay, okay, so you've recused yourself, so it's a Florida...
And actually, I started this all because, Mr. Clark, in respect, I should have made you go sit in the little chair.
That's what it was, because he didn't get up and move.
Oh, that's what it was, oh, okay.
I did, I did.
Okay, so, you were abstaining from the vote?
I have to.
Okay.
She's a town clerk, former town clerk, she knows.
So, Mr. Edmiston made the motion, Mr. Horn seconded the motion. We have four in favor, Mr. Durgan abstains.
Oh, and for the record, abstaining for the vote for Tom, too.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, where were we here?
Planning board comments. If I may.
That's right, okay, we only had one, let's go on.
It's been an exchange of emails that I have been witness to, and I find it somewhat disturbing, quite frankly, because I would think that all of us would have a certain measure of civility and a certain amount of respect for all of us as a body individually we're serving on this board. And some of the characterizations that are presented in some of these emails, and someone's proclivity for using nicknames, seems kind of second-gratish, if you will. Maybe I'm even advancing it a year or two in terms of the thought process there. I don't think they benefit anybody, they engender a lot of ill sentiment, I'll use that as lacking what I really want to say. And I think somewhere along the way, we can dispense with this sort of communication. And it is public record, I don't know that 20 years from now, someone wants that brought up when a, you know, eulogy is put together, that someone has made use of the word nut job.
Oh, oh.
Oh, yeah, it's there, you know it's there, because you put it there.
You are part of that email.
Well, I have a copy of it right here. And you sent it on your town email, too. And I think you might want to revisit the town employee handbook, and see what it is that is required or suggested in terms of the decorum indicated. I think that's enough, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone else have anything? Okay, great, so, let's see, comments from the audience?